Call to order, please. I stamp allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to December 7, 2017, Hillsborough Township, public meeting of the planning board. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason.
Present.
Ms. Beccarina, Hapson, Ms. Forrest.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Vice Chairman Julian.
Here.
Committeeman Delcor.
Here.
Mayor Sarachi.
Here.
Chairman Lepanti.
Here. Thank you. Our first order of business is the disposition of minutes dated October 12, 2017. A copy is provided in your packet if you'd like to refresh your memory. And two motions to approve.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, the vice chair, the mayor, Committeeman Delcor, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Scoboe, and Mr. Weinstein.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve it. Second? Second. Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian.
Yes.
Committeeman Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti.
Yes. Next would be the disposition of minutes dated November 2, 2017. Again, another copy in your packet provided.
The eligible members are the chair, the vice chair, as well as the mayor, Committeeman Delcor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Mr. Hestag, and Mr. Scoboe. Sorry.
Thank you.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian.
Yes.
Committeeman Delcor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti.
Yes. Thank you. We do not have any disposition of resolutions, no other planning board business committee report, so any business from the floor not on today's agenda from the public? Okay, seeing none. So we'll go right to the first consideration of ordinance. Ordinance 2017-20. An ordinance of the Township of Hillsborough, Somerset County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 188, Land Use and Development, Article 5, Districts and Standards, Section 188-113.1 in the GA Gateway A District of the Code of the Township of Hillsborough by amending Section 113.1 to add new subsection J, Multifamily Inclusionary Overlay District. Mr. Maskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me note that Ms. Beccarina has arrived at 7:35. Thank you, David.
This ordinance was introduced by the Township Committee back in November and in accordance with the municipal land use law has referred it to the planning board for their comments. It establishes a multifamily inclusionary overlay option within the GA Gateway A District. It would allow construction of up to 126 units of residential, of which 31 units would meet affordability criteria, thereby helping us to meet our affordable housing obligation. To give you some orientation, I'll refer to the map on the wall. The property in the middle is the tract that the ordinance would impact, those three lots. It's a 9.3-acre tract. Amwell Road runs down in the middle of the map. Route 206 is off to the left. The bypass, 206 bypass, is just off the map to your right. This is Nelson's Corner Shopping Center. This is Amwell Commons, the Professional Office Park. This is Advanced Auto. And then you have the property in question. Steinmetz Road is right about here. There's some single-family homes in here. This large vacant piece is actually part of the DOT right-of-way for the bypass, as they said, is right about here. Directly across the street is the Bridgeway and Avalon Bri-Haven Assisted Living Facility. So it's a fairly straightforward ordinance. Again, the GA zone stays intact underneath the overlay. If the owner of the tract at some point wished to invoke the overlay, they could. The Gateway A District does currently permit residential units, but only in a mixed-use development. This ordinance would allow the residential uses to go in without a mixed-use component, would be a single-use residential development. I can ask any more specific questions if you have any.
Okay. Anything from the dais? Okay. Can we make a motion to open to the public on this? Motion open to public?
Scoboe.
Second? All in favor?
Hi.
All right. So is any questions from the public based on this application of the ordinance 2017-20 that was brought up public, please come up?
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. You said they're changing it from mixed-use to only residential. Why is the change being made?
Because it was determined in part of our affordable housing obligation to try to maximize the amount of affordable housing we could gain on the site, we could include a residential component rather than a mixed-use, which would not necessarily get us a maximum return.
Anyone else? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
My name's Bob Kennedy. I'm a resident of Steinmetz Road.
Okay.
And questions and concerns. You know, it feels like the Steinmetz Road neighborhood has been under assault. And what I mean by that is we put the bypass and we bisected Steinmetz Road. We're still, to this day, being inundated by the staccato blasts of dump trucks and tractor-trailers coming down to the stop sign that echoes throughout the neighborhood. It's a verbal assault that starts at 5:00 in the morning, every weekday morning when people are going to work. It's awful. You know, whoever planned that, and I came because this is the planning board. And I've seen lots of planning projects in my history working at Princeton University, they're not always correctly done. All right? This, in my mind, wasn't done because it still inflicts pain on the neighborhood. Somebody should really visit the site and listen firsthand to what the hell's going on there because it's not good. My second question is, do these have to be three-story buildings? You know, we've got single-family homes on Steinmetz Road, putting these up in South Carolina, they call those three-story buildings, the locals call them stacky shacks. All right? They're looking down in the backyards of the Steinmetz Road residents. It infiltrates the privacy that these residents have on the roads. Hillsborough's a big township. Do we have to have that density right there? I mean, there's lots of rooms being done correctly, in my mind, just on the other side of 206 on Amwell Road where they're two levels high. To me, that's much more agreeable to the people on Steinmetz Road than what's currently proposed. I don't think it's in best interest of the neighborhood. That's a neighborhood that's been there a long time. My wife and I have been there for 33 years. Some other residents have been there, others. It's been a great neighborhood, quiet neighborhood, good place to raise kids. Now, we just feel like the neighborhood doesn't catch a break anymore. And we may be the easy way out for the township to find a place to put affordable housing. And that's all I care to say, and I just hope someone listens that this is done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Scoboe. Can you hear me at all?
Just lower it a little bit for you. You can take it out either way, whatever's easier.
Katie Vodder. I live on Steinmetz Road also. And all the stuff Bob said, I don't have to repeat, but there is actually an incorrect on the map as far as Steinmetz Road where it goes in front of our home. We've been there 41 years, and Steinmetz Road does not run in front of our house as it's shown on that map. It's only a right-of-way. I'm not going to talk in front of people, so sorry.
That's okay. Take your time.
And basically, you know, it's in our front yard. Don't mind me. But yeah, the main thing was that...
So we're in a speech block here. Ms., I'm sorry, we need to speak into the...
Okay.
That microphone...
There's a cordless one you can take with you.
Right here on the table.
So we can get it on the...
Make sure it's turned on. You want to see if it's on?
Okay.
There you go.
Very good.
Thanks, sorry.
That's what.
Yes, Steinmetz Road runs here, and then in front of our property, it is an 18-foot right-of-way. It doesn't continue down here. We don't have road frontage on our property. So that's just something that was incorrect on that, so that's all.
Okay. Is that actually showing a road there, Eric, or is it just a margin marker delineation, or David, showing where the border would be? I can't tell really from...
Yeah, Steinmetz, yeah, comes in off of Amwell, and then it makes a T of sorts. I'm not sure how far down it goes. It may very well be that it stops before this property and might be just an access easement.
Okay. Anybody else? Come on up.
Yes. Nick Markory also on Steinmetz Road. I see what they're going to do there. They all said a lot of it was going to happen. You're going to put these big buildings up there with all the water going to run, everybody's basement, everyone has a sub-pump. What's going to happen? Everyone's basement's going to be flooded, their backyard's going to be flooded. It's all going to hit them. What's going to happen to all the animals? We have red fox over there. Isn't that an endangered species? They are out there, the deer are out there. What's going to happen? It's all going to go out to the road, it's going to be getting hit, more damage is going to be done. I mean, right now, the animals are all back there in our yards. They're not getting hit, they're not getting run off of, nothing's happening with that. We don't have any flooding problems, but after this, we're going to have flooding problems. You put up a three-story building, where's all that water going? Everyone else's yard. Everyone's going to have a basement problem, flooding. Because like I said, we all have sub-pumps. Is it going to ruin our wells? We have wells, too. I mean, traffic? Traffic is bad now. You're going to have 126 units there? How are we going to get out of our own road now? I mean, I'm just making a point, but we...
We're listening.
So I mean, that, more people, schools are going to be overcrowded, can't get out on the roads, kids are not going to get a good education anymore because why? All the classrooms are going to be overcrowded, 126 units. You think it's only going to be 126 people there? No. There's probably going to be about four or five people in there. You're going to have kids, that. I mean, the primary, isn't that going to go up? That usually happens, low-income housing. Go down Hamilton Street, you can see all the new buildings they put up down there. Would you walk down that street now? Probably not. Not at night. You know, we like our neighborhood safe. No one bothers us. Everything is calm there. Animals, the deer, want to sit down on our front lawn? Doesn't bother me. It's a calm place there. But if we're going to have this going on and everything else, that's going to ruin everything. I don't think anybody can agree with that.
You done?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just... Okay, so I don't know how to address all your concerns, but I'll address the concern about the water because that's up to the builder to provide a engineered water remediation plan. So they cannot, by law, make the water any worse than the condition is now. So they're going to have to come up with a plan so that you don't have a water problem. Whether, and it has to be approved by the township engineers, by the county, state. So it's not they can just run the water to your backyard. So to that, I can answer that I would be confident to say that I would doubt that you would have any additional water in your sumps or backyards.
We don't have any drainage on the road. I mean, the sides of the road is where it goes, so if they're not going to put any type of sewer and this and that and anything else, and outbuildings and everything else...
They would have to provide the engineering to handle any water that wouldn't create a problem on that site. Okay. The answer to your question about low-income housing, okay, doesn't necessarily bring, necessarily say it's going to bring in an element that you're trying to describe as problematic. It's just providing a place for people to live that maybe aren't making a wage that can afford to normally live in Hillsborough Township. And we are obligated by the state to provide that, whether it be here, down the street, or wherever. Okay, so it's not that we don't wish that we could change the laws, and Mr. Bernstein has been in many a courtroom trying to get a definitive number, and our officials, too, but this is the situation that we're in right now. And I can empathize with you saying that the cluster housing isn't necessarily ideal for what you want to see in your backyard, but it is the fact of the matter is what we are facing as a municipality. And we have to try and engineer and plan the best we can to keep it in a sane situation from it being all over the place. And I'm not sure if that's the answer you want to hear, but that is the fact of the matter, what we're facing. And I'm sure that our two committee people here can, have been in way more meetings than I have, and our counselor, too, to try and describe to you what we're facing here. But it's not an easy answer. And the easy answer would say, we just don't do it, but we can, unfortunately.
If I put three houses on there, half a million-dollar houses, million-dollar houses, bring a lot of income that way, and then we don't have, you know, a small amount there.
Because the reality is that we have an affordable housing obligation.
What about all the stuff down on 206 that we just built?
That's a fraction of what needs to be done. If you want me, I'm not going to sugarcoat it for you. It's, the reality is, that's a fraction of what the ultimate obligation will be. Because the state has mandated at the Supreme Court level that each municipality has a certain obligation. Now, we have not been given a specific number, but in the prior round, the total units that we were supposed to provide were something in the neighborhood of, keep me honest, 485. That's just affordable units. That's not, that's, you know, the total units that would be required. That number will change with the latest round, and we have an obligation as municipality to abide by the state regulations that say these are the number of units you have to build. So while I share the chairman's empathy for the neighborhoods, the reality is that there will be a number of developments that will go in across the municipality to help us meet that obligation and be in compliance with state requirements. Because if we don't, if we choose to say, you know what, state, this is your regulation, you deal with it, we're not dealing with it. The reality is, the only way that gets dealt with is they pick a developer and say, build whatever you want, just make sure there's affordable units in there. And then we have no control in the matter. So we are trying to do this in a, what I'll call systematic way, a way that we can sort of take a number of developments and not have a material impact to any one particular neighborhood. But we recognize that it's certainly more units than any of us would choose to build absent the requirements that we have. But the reality is, you're right, the schools will be impacted at some point down the road. No, absolutely no doubt about it. That will change down, you know, there will be an impact. But this is one of a number of similar type of ordinances that we will implement over time to help us meet our obligations. I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's the reality of the situation we're in.
Let me ask you another question. Does Rick still own the property, or did he sell it? That's where his warehouse is from the auto parts store. I know we sold the auto parts store, so that's still his property?
Don't know at this point, and that's not the issue before the board.
I mean, I still see all his equipment there and everything else.
And it may be there for a period of time. What we're doing is rezoning for the possibility of an inclusionary development. It may not happen tomorrow, it may not happen in this round, but we are trying to address, as the Committeeman indicated, our obligation, and it will ultimately be up to the property owner to come with a, if this board recommends, if the committee adopts, comes with a compliant plan, they'll have to come before this board to address many of the issues that you asked about that are not before this board at this time.
One thing we ought to keep in mind as well, and I understand your concern about over-intensifying, this Gateway A District was put into place several years ago, and it's actually a very high-intensity zone. It's not a single-family zone anymore. So you could build substantial office buildings, commercial buildings in this zone as it is now. This just, again, this is an overlay district that allows residential use on this property. But the Gateway A Zone is a fairly intense zone as it stands today, even if they don't change anything.
Why three stories?
Current Gateway A zoning policy.
Two.
Two. We're trying to maximize the situation and a little impact on...
Eric, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Overall property as possible, and it's, you know, again, we're looking for a project that hopefully addresses those needs as close to Amwell Road as possible.
What about the wildlife? What's going to happen with that?
Well, I'm going to kind of chime in now about, because affordable housing's been one of my pet peeves right now. And unfortunately, what's happened is the state legislature isn't doing its job, and the courts took it over. You know, we've got a Senate president, now a former House Speaker, or Assembly Speaker, that didn't post bills that would have rectified what's happening across the state. Hillsborough's not unique. Some of our surrounding municipalities, their obligations are well over 1,000 units. In the way the law is written, only 10% to 20% has to be set aside. So basically, take 1,000, multiply by four or five, that tells you how many overall housing units are being built in some of these surrounding communities. One of the things right now that's going through, because we're working through, and Eric, correct me, is, was it fair share housing?
Correct.
One of the things they don't care about is infrastructure. Doesn't matter to them.
Or wildlife.
That would include wildlife, anything. You know, one of our arguments, that we're trying to work down our numbers, is to emphasize that Hillsborough is one road in, one road out, but they couldn't care less, unfortunately. They don't care about the schools. All they care about is getting these affordable housings and units in. And unfortunately, what municipalities do is, we don't get to build them. What we're doing, we're working with the property owners who are coming, you know, with plans or ideas to help us meet those needs. And like Committeeman Delcor said, we don't put up, they haven't put a deadline yet, but if we don't meet or come up with affordable housing plan by that deadline, we lose all control of planning. It happened to Hillsborough back in the late 90s for the round two. They missed it, they got into a, I know this should be G-rated, but I'm going to say they got into a you-know-what type of match over an affordable housing plan that hurt Hillsborough badly, and we lost. So we've seen it firsthand. We're actually under, Frank, what do we call it, court master? Together, still, you know, still dealing with that second-round disaster. So we're trying to, you know, avoid that going forward. So we're trying to make the best of this situation, but no one's happy with what's going on here. Now, as far as, you know, who moves in, we like to call it low-income housing, it really, it's not Section 8 housing, it's not the projects. Actually, I have first-round affordable housing outside my development. Got no problems there. I've been there over 20 years. As a matter of fact, people to get to actually qualify for affordable housing, besides having, you know, a limited income, they actually have to have actually excellent credit, meaning they got to hold down a job and actually bearing income. So the people in there, they're just, they're generally decent, you know, with a good credit rating and a stable job, so. So I don't think you're going to see, you know, have those fears or concerns, you know, with any of these projects right now. And again, in this one, this is not 100% affordable housing. 24% of the units are being set aside for affordable housing, so 76% is going to be, you know, market-rate units. So should have a good, again, you know, decent set of neighbors in that area. But again, that's unfortunately the realities. Our state legislatures let us down, and they're not doing their job. And I think, you know, what everyone here could do is actually place a call into their legislature representative and get them to force the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker to post those bills that would straighten this out and get rid of, and take this out of the hands of the courts and fair share housing, whose sole purpose to drive is to build as many affordable housing units, you know, in the suburban areas, rural areas of the state.
So to answer your immediate question, they don't care about the deer. We happen to be a rural community that has a lot of land available for a target. So if it's not your facility, it's someone else's facility out in western part of the town, which there probably will be, so they're going to pick everybody. And that's kind of the reason why we're trying to maximize our usage here so that we can build less sites get disturbed by maximizing the sites that we can overlay. Fortunately, you happen to be in the neighborhood of one, but there's going to be one in the neighborhood of somebody else down the road. It's not going to be just you. And believe me, this is just the tip of the iceberg. And I wish we could do otherwise, but right now, that's why we're trying to plan this as much as possible so that we don't have the kind of structure, building that you don't want in town. We're trying to do at least a plan that makes sense for the areas as best we can. And I appreciate your comments, I really do. And it's probably nothing that we don't agree with you here in a lot of ways. We love to keep it all farmland. I grew up here, I've been here since 1916, '73. So I've seen it change a lot.
Well, I got a solution. We got the other half, and the bypass is not even being used. Why don't we put it there?
We don't own that land.
The state owns it.
The state owns that land.
Do you? The state wants it, so why not give it to them? Say, here, here's your, here's your property back, put it right there.
Be nice if they would come forward with it. Be nice if they would come forward.
Make a phone call, it's not our decision. We are out of control.
I mean, we only use that little spot, I mean, it's kind of a waste, so I figure I'll also use the other half of it for something, build it there. It's a solution, right? It's already been cut, paved, trees are there, put the building there at the end.
It's not really enough land, but I can appreciate your point.
It's a solution. Proud to do it.
It's not our land. Can't make, that's not why we're here, sir. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Motion.
Motion enclosed, public.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeking a motion, Mr. Chairman, from the board to approve the ordinance, which is ordinance number 2017-20, and refer back to the Township Committee for their consideration on second reading.
Though I can empathize with the public in the fact that there's some impact on housing in their backyard, I understand it, but it's really, as we explained, a situation that we really can't control on ourselves. The only control we can have is to try and create plans like this to make affordable complexes and better planning. So in that instance, I'm going to motion to approve this, as said, and we'll look for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Beccarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Committeeman Delcor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next consideration ordinance, 2017-21. It's an ordinance of the Township of Hillsborough, Somerset County, New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan, Bellmead GSA Depot, Section 6, Land Use Plan and Design Guidelines, subsections B, permitted principal uses, C accessory uses, E area, yard and bulk regulations, and F supplementary regulations.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, this ordinance has been referred by the Township Committee to the Planning Board, not under the municipal land use law, but under the local redevelopment and housing law, because this is a redevelopment plan. First of all, just to give you some context, because I know there's been some questions about what property we're actually talking about. This is a map from the redevelopment plan that was adopted in 2008. The, to give you some orientation, okay, Route 206 is right about here. This is Mountain View Road running through here. East Mountain runs up the side. The new county ball fields are approximately right in here. So this whole white area is subject of the redevelopment plan. This is Oxford over here. This AVM Park is just up to the north a bit. You can just about make out the ball field. This property here, just north of the white area, and all the way up to Amwell, is where the remediation project is currently undergoing, where they're stripping all the dirt out, replacing it. That is not subject or affected by what you're looking at tonight, the amendment to the redevelopment plan. It only impacts this property here, which is currently under ownership by the county. The redevelopment plan, which was adopted in 2008, allowed certain uses. It's actually considered a research and development zone, so it was not specifically a park zone. It's outdoor, it's for recreation purposes, as well as recreation, I mean, I'm sorry, research and development type facilities. Obviously, a big chunk of it has been already developed as a park. Now, one of the things that is currently permitted in the redevelopment plan is indoor recreation facilities, including inflatable bubbles. However, there are no regulations in the plan to govern such a facility, how big, where it should be, what would be included in it. So the main purpose of this amendment is to do just that. It's to introduce into the redevelopment plan standards to govern such a facility. So, as a, for instance, we would add what would be a permitted accessory use. So these facilities, they're popping up here and there, these indoor recreation facilities. So in this amendment, we would be specific in terms of what could be included in it besides the actual sports facility itself. So 20 percent of the total building area could include such things as sale of retail goods related to onsite activities, so sports equipment, t-shirts, that type of thing, daycare service for the people using it, food and beverage concession, medical offices and clinics, some meeting space. They would all be subordinate to the actual indoor recreation facility. We also, in this amendment, would further define what's meant by height, how it's measured. It's somewhat open-ended in the plan right now. This gives much more definition in terms of how one would measure height. Right now, the redevelopment plan caps it at three stories and 40 feet. That doesn't change, except that the 40 feet would be an average measurement from the average grade at ground level adjoining the exterior walls. Now, the biggest change, if you will, has to do with introducing standards for the inflatable dome, which again, is currently permitted, but it doesn't describe it or, or regulate in any way. So first of all, it would have to be constructed as part of a public or private recreational facility. It would have to be ancillary to a permanent indoor structure, so it couldn't just be a dome. It would have to be part of a larger recreational complex, which would include traditional hard shell buildings. It would be limited to two domes per facility, only one of which could be, be higher than the current 40 feet average. It could go up to 75 feet at the top of the dome. Now, you know, these domes are not square. It's a parabolic shape. So the way the amendment is written, it could reach 75 feet, but for no more than 2 and 1/2 percent of the dome roof's surface. So in other words, it slopes down from the very top of the dome. In order to be able to go to that height, it would have to be at least 125 feet from a property line. And it'd have to be located to minimize their visibility from neighboring residential properties or public streets. The amendment also better defines the parking regulations, so that in addition to the five spaces per thousand square feet of usable floor area that's now required, they would also have to provide parking for any non-recreational accessory uses, like I said, the daycare or the retail store services that might be in the facility. And it would add 40 spaces for each athletic field that might get built. So the parking regulations have bulked up a bit. And that's all of the amendments.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Weinstein has come to me and asked me a question relative to a possible conflict. There may be an issue for him in terms of this applic, in terms of this amendment, and I recommended that he excuse himself from the conversations. And so he was waiting for me to speak before he stepped down from the dais.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
One thing I'd like to add, this is not an application for any type of development at the current time. This is just to amend the redevelopment plan requirements. A question was asked of me earlier today, what would be a next step if and when someone did come in to develop such a facility. They would have to go through a few steps, one of which is, because it's in a redevelopment plan, the township committee would have to designate that entity as the official redeveloper of whatever piece of this property they were to develop. They would have to enter into a redevelopment, a redeveloper agreement with the township, and they would have to go to the planning board for site plan approval. So this amendment, again, fills in some regulatory gaps, but in no way does it approve any particular application or proposal at this time. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I have a question about the height of the dome. Why does it have to be so high? I mean, what are the, are there houses in that area? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how.
Sure. The dome height is determined, to some extent, by what's underneath it, obviously. Though, we've looked at some other places. And if you put in a regulation-sized field, you need a certain amount of height for the ball to go up. And 75 feet apparent is, appears to be that height. In terms of who might see it, is my understanding, if such a facility were to be built, it would be in this lower portion of the property? So you've got Oxford here, which is some 400, 500 feet away from the property line itself. You've got some houses down on this end, in a long mountain view.
So, did you, so the answer is the height is required to facilitate the size of the, of the, of the field that's inside it?
I'm just wondering, because I'm not very familiar with that area, but I'm familiar with that East Mountain Road, and I know that there are a lot of, just one level homes there. I'm just wondering what it will look like once it's all done, if it's done.
Yeah. This is several hundred acres, if you keep that in mind. It's not always, in fact, when we started sending notices out to the folks in the area, you know, generally the traditional notification is to, everybody within 200 feet. But we realized that 200 feet just barely nipped the corner of Oxford here. That's about 200 feet. So we went out, we notified folks well beyond the 200-foot limit. So just to give you some idea of how far away some of these houses might be. So then you add on the additional, at least 125 feet from the property line, wherever it might, I don't know where on here it would be located. So whatever distance this is from the houses, plus an additional 125 feet, plus there'd have to be some landscaping and buffering. Again, the requirement is that it minimize any visibility from a public road or from any residential property. So, and that's something that you folks could actually take up in, when it comes to a site plan process, in terms of actual site design and layout and buffering and that sort of thing.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion open to public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions from public? Again, please try to use the microphone and state your name and your address, please.
Craig Warner, 37, Arthur Road. I'm affected by the, where's the little pointer? Can I walk over to there?
Just take the, the mobile mic with you.
Okay. In your conversation, you said that the dome could be built here, in that area?
Actually, technically, it could be built anywhere in that white area.
Because I live in a house that's right over here.
Mm-hmm, on Arthur, correct.
On Arthur. And 75 feet is pretty high. I understand what you're considering. I mean, can we consider moving it back? Is it 125, going 200 feet or more? So it may not be a problem for us?
200 feet from the property line?
Yeah.
That's something for the board to take, to consider.
And then the other thing while you consider is that, I live there, and I can tell you right now, when people are leaving that park and it's very crowded, it gets backed up on that road, something bad, right now. It was considered that as a problem as well that we have there.
People coming out of the park?
We can't get out of Brook. It's, it's backed up all the way to the park, to 206, when everybody's getting out.
Yeah.
And they're gonna get more use, which is fine.
Yeah.
Park is very nice. We're not against that. But actually, we wanna see this dome, if we can help it.
Yeah, again, they'd have to do a traffic study and make sure that access, but again, the other thing, and I did have this conversation with, with a neighbor this afternoon, a lot of people maybe don't remember, but in 2008, when this was approved, it allows research and development facilities, which are fairly large.
Which we were concerned about as well.
So, traffic, now, there is, you know, there is potential access up to Amwell Road. There's a lot of other things that need to be taken into consideration. But yes, that, that would have to be addressed, again, during site plan approval, in terms of how you're coming in and out of here, and how you're controlling it.
It's only an issue when they're all leaving at once.
Yeah.
So if we come up with something, I mean, you know, help relieve that situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Anderson. I live at 49 Oxford, right at the corner there.
Okay.
Question, what, they've been working on this for a year already, and just wanted to take a look at the map. This is pretty old, right, I assume?
I'm sorry, what?
Prior to, this map was drawn before the current.
Yes, this is from the 2008 plan, right. The, correct.
Okay. So, so here I am. This is all redeveloped at this point. It looks park-like at the moment. I'm just wondering if what you're saying, I don't know whether they're gonna, considering putting the domes or anything on the property that they've already, I mean, they've put a million trees. They've replaced the trees they took out. So it doesn't look like they're gonna build anything in this very.
Well, actually, yeah, let me, it's, I know it's hard to tell, but if this property that they're clearing, I'm over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. This property here is where they're doing the remediation, where they're clearing and they're putting in the new trees. And that property actually comes out behind your property, and you see this little alley, alley, it's not that little on the map. It's, that's what you're seeing. This is where they come in with the trucks. Comes in right here from, from Mountain View.
Okay.
They come up, and then it wraps up behind your property, behind Oxford and all this. So what you're seeing them working on is actually not in the redevelop, is not in this white area. It's between your house and the redevelopment area.
Okay.
So it's actually between. So those trees, when they replant in here, they'll, more than likely, that's gonna stay that way.
Okay. Do you know what they have in mind for those, that replanted areas, it's gonna be park-like?
Not right now, no.
Thanks.
Still private property.
It is private property.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Sure. Now's the time. Susan? Okay. Okay. All right. Surprise. All right. Motion to close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, as a point of reference, do we happen to, just for the public's sake, the soccer center in Franklin, their dome, do you know what the height of that particular unit is? Do you have any, as a reference, what's built over there?
Yes. Actually, Franklin's not a dome. No, it's a dome.
It's a dome.
Well, yeah. It's an air dome.
Send this part of the paper.
Go Google it.
That's soccer center? Yep. Okay, yes, I spoke to the owner. It's approximately 40 to 50 feet now.
Okay.
But he explained to me, he said that it's problematic, what's happening with the lower ones, because they're obviously flatter, is that the snow caves them in. So it's not a practical height. He said, the higher, the better, because you get more of a slope and the, and the snow slides off. The one in, on Route 31, just outside of Flemington, the Health Quest, that's around 60 to 70. I understand that one's, I was told by the, one of the code officials there, that one's gonna, apparently come down, and they're gonna build a new one across the street by Diamond Nation. So that's, the one is, Rutgers has one, it's 80 feet high. There's one out in Pennsylvania that's 85 feet high.
That was kinda my question, because I know soccer centers, theirs has collapsed several times, and then.
Yeah, you said.
Because it's too low and flat.
Yeah.
And it.
I think the one, Health Quest, I think, has caved in once. Actually, I was told they actually deflated on purpose in snowstorms, because it would collapse otherwise. And I know one soccer centers, because it's not that tall, they take out a lot of lights playing soccer there. I've seen a few of them hit that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Excuse me? Well, I thought, motion to close public? I thought we did that already, but maybe not. Motion to close public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we have in front of us a, a motion to approve ordinance 2017-21, an ordinance on the Township of Hillsborough, Somerset County, New Jersey, amending the redevelopment plan, Bellmead GSA Depot, Section 6, Land Use Plan and Design Guidelines, Section B, permitted principal uses, excuse me, C uses, E area, yard and bulk regulations, and F supplementary regulations. Frank, you have a second?
Second. This is also a referral to the governing body.
Right. Refer to Township Committee.
Sorry.
Did you want to take under consideration the suggestion that you make it 200 feet? Or make that recommendation to the Township Committee, I should say? Yeah, I think that.
I think we should.
Yeah.
And we'll, we can evaluate if there's any impact in the interim.
Who made the motion? Who made the second?
Frank made.
I made the motion.
And I, yes.
Can I retract my motion?
Yeah.
I'll retract my motion.
Well, no.
I'll amend my motion.
Would the maker and the secondaire agree to amend the motion to include the 200 feet recommendation?
We'll see if we can, the 200.
Foot recommendation.
Foot recommendation will, is, is applicable. Thank you.
Good work.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call, Lucille.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Decorena?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Committee Mendelcor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Chairman Lepanti?
Yes. Thank you. Public hearing, subdivision site plan applications, I believe there are none. Correspondence, our next meeting scheduled for December 14th?
Correct. That's the Lutske subdivision coming back.
All that engineering has been done?
We hope so.
Okay.
And that'll be it for this year. The reorganization meeting is January 11th. That's starting at 7:00 PM. Not, the regular meeting starts at 7:30. The reorg starts at 7:00 PM, January 11th.
Okay. One other note, just one.
Not the first, is it?
No. I believe on the side at last, earlier this year, you were going to do it because of the compressed schedule, not turn it over in two-day period.
Okay. So I want to know, I'd like to express, as behalf of the board and the township, our sincere condolences to Mr. Bernstein, who his mother passed away recently, and felt yeoman's work for him to show up today in a meeting that he didn't really have to. work for him to show up today in a meeting that he didn't really have to, but felt his